I'm writing with the staff, so we're staying all right.
But I've been having a problem. Yeah, it's a voting button. Test us. Okay, folks, if everyone could take their seats, please, we'll start the meeting. This hearing of the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission will come to order. The time is 6:06 PM. It is Thursday, October 19th, 2011, and we're in Bullhead City at the Bullhead City Council Chambers. And want you all, please, rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one liberty, and the principle of liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, thank you all for coming tonight. It's great to have such a great turnout, and it's my pleasure and privilege to be up here with you in Bullhead City today. It was a lovely drive up from Phoenix, and I get to experience the lovely drive back tonight because I've got to be back bright and early tomorrow morning to work. We're here tonight to hear public comment on two maps that the Commission has published, one for a draft congressional map and one a draft legislative map. And your input on those maps, your opinions, whether you like them or don't like them, and why are going to be critical for the Commission as we go forward in further refining those maps to come up with final maps. I think next, to comply with federal law, the Commission is required to have translation services available, so I'd like to invite our Spanish translator, Jimena Vargas, to come up to the podium, and she's going to read, I'd ask if she could please read the announcement in English first and then in Spanish, offering those services.
Good evening. Commissioner Freeman, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, in accordance with the Voting Rights Act, a translator/interpreter will be available at all the public hearings in order to provide translating/interpreting services that may be needed for those citizens that need translating or interpreting services. Please contact the translator present at this meeting so that she can assist you. That would be me. Comisionado Freeman, comisionados damas y caballeros, de acuerdo con la Ley de los Derechos Electorales, un traductor e intérprete estará disponible en todas las reuniones de audiencia pública a fin de proporcionar la traducción e interpretación que puedan ser necesarios para los ciudadanos que necesiten servicios de traducción e interpretación. Por favor, contacte el traductor presente en esta audiencia para que la pueda ayudar. Eso sería yo.
Thank you. Well, thank you. My name is Scott Freeman. I'm one of the five Commissioners on the Commission. I serve as Vice Chairman for the Commission on an alternating basis with Commissioner Herrera. The other Commissioners are Chair Colleen Mathis, Vice Chair Herrera, Commissioner McNulty, and Commissioner Sturts, I'm sure are watching tonight on the Internet. All our hearings are livestreamed, when possible, on the Internet, and I know last time when the Commission came to Bullhead City, it was a great live, I was watching from my office, and you really have a great setup here. It was one of the best, clearest livestreams that I was able to watch, and I did watch and listen to everything that everyone said last time. Just some more introductions up here. To my right is Counsel for the Commission, Mary O'Grady, and one of our legal consultants, Bruce Adelson, is also, is to her right. To my left is our mapping consultant, Corinne Bealock. We have the Commission's Executive Director, Ray Blaydean, with us. We have our Court Reporter, Christine Bemis, and in the back, we have two of our Public Outreach Coordinators, Kristi Olson and Lisa Schmeling. If you have any questions or need any assistance tonight, please feel free to contact any of our staff, and in fact, after the hearing, I will stay as late as need be and answer any questions that anyone has. Before we get too much further, I'd like to invite Mayor Jack Hakim to come up to the podium to give some words of welcome.
Good evening, Vice Chair Freeman, staff. Welcome back to Bullhead City. In the audience this evening are city officials, county official, and state officials, and I'd like to acknowledge them, please. We have Mayor John Salem from Kingman. We have Councilman from Kingman, Keith Walker. We have Sam Madrano, Councilman, Bullhead City. We have Jack Kramer, City Manager, Kingman. We have Charlie Kason, City Manager of Lake Havasu, who is representing Mayor Mark Nixon. And we have our City Manager, Toby Cotter, from Bullhead City. Also here with us is Tom Sockwell, Mojave County Supervisor, and State Representative Doris Caddell. Having said all that, I just want to welcome you back again, and all of us here know the time and effort that you and your fellow Commissioners have put into this, and we certainly appreciate all of the efforts that you have done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks again to people in Bullhead City for making us feel so welcome up here. If you would like to address the Commission tonight, you need to fill out one of these yellow Request to Speak forms, and we have them in the back, and just complete it and give it to one of our staff, and they'll get it up to me, and then I'll be calling your name later when we come to the public comment portion of the hearing. If you don't want to come to the microphone and speak tonight, you should have also received, or there's available in the back, one of these packets, and in the back of the packet there is a blue form that you can provide some written comments, and either leave them with our staff tonight, or you can take it home and think about it and mail it into the Commission. You can also leave comments on the Commission's website. It's azredistricting.org, and there is a link to a public comment portion of the website. You can leave your comments there, they all get to the Commission, and there are phone numbers and email addresses and other ways to contact the Commission as well. Next, on the agenda, I'd like to ask our mapping consultant, Corinne Bealock, to give a short presentation on the redistricting process and how we've gotten to the point we are now.
Good evening. I am Corinne Kabina Bealock with Strategic Telemetry. I'm happy to be here this evening in Bullhead City to discuss the draft congressional and legislative maps presented by the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission. The goal of these meetings is to hear comments from you about the draft maps, so thank you for taking the time to attend. The draft maps you will see today are currently under a 30-day review period so that the Commission can hear your opinion on the maps. Before getting into the maps, I want to give you a quick overview of the redistricting process, and hopefully the slides will go up on the screen there, and we can flip through them. Just on a quick overview, Arizona's redistricting process is governed by the state constitution as amended by voters in 2000 with the passage of Proposition 106. It stipulates that the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission redraw Arizona's congressional and legislative districts to reflect the most recent census. Due to the 2010 census, Arizona gained a congressional seat going from eight to nine. So what are the requirements of the state constitution via Prop 106? New district boundaries must comply with the U.S. Constitution and the Voting Rights Act, which we'll talk a little bit more about. They also must have equal population. Criteria A and B are federally mandated. To the extent practicable, the districts must be compact and contiguous, respect communities of interest, use visible geographic features, city, town, and county boundaries and undivided census tracts, and favor competitive districts were no significant detriment to other goals. Just a bit on the Voting Rights Act here. Arizona's congressional and legislative districts must receive preclearance or approval from the Department of Justice or a federal court under Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act before they can take effect. To get the preclearance, Arizona must demonstrate that the new districts do not discriminate against minority voters in purpose or effect, which means there can be no intentional or accidental discrimination. Under Section 5, Arizona's redistricting plans cannot be retrogressive. The plans cannot weaken or reduce minority voters' rights. The presence of discrimination can be determined by analyzing population data and election results. So just briefly, we have Bruce Adelson, who's been introduced, who's an attorney who's working with the Federal Compliance Consulting Group to advise the Commission on the matters regarding the Voting Rights Act, and he'll give us a brief overview as well in more detail.
Thank you, and good evening. We thought that it might be helpful for me to spend a couple of minutes and focus on Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act. For your information, I'm a former senior attorney for the United States Department of Justice. With the Department of Justice, my responsibility was reviewing your redistricting plans nine years ago. It was my team that wrote the letter in May 2002 which objected to your legislative redistricting plan. To get preclearance, the redistricting plans that are before you tonight, the congressional and legislative plans, cannot be, as we were talking about, retrogressive. They cannot discriminate against the rights of minority voters. If they are found to discriminate, then the Department of Justice will object or block the plans from being approved, which is what we did nine years ago. The federal requirements are absolute. They take precedence above all others. Of course, under state law, you have various criteria, such as compactness and competitiveness, that are very important. The federal criteria must be satisfied first. To the extent that any of the state criteria conflict with the federal ones, then that has to be reexamined, because the Department of Justice will not preclear a plan that is the department finds to be discriminatory, which, as I said, is what we found nine years ago. So I hope this little overview from my perspective as a former federal law enforcement officer is helpful. I appreciate your time, and it is a pleasure to be here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So back to the presentation. Before I get to the good part, the maps, we'll basically go over the timeline for the Commission. So the overall timeline for the redistricting process can be broken down into five steps. Earlier this year, Step 1, the Commission was established. The Commissioners were appointed following a thorough screening process and serve in a voluntary role for the state of Arizona. Tonight, of course, we have Vice Chair Freeman with us, and he mentioned the other Commissioners that aren't able to be here, Jose Herrera, Vice Chair, Colleen Mathis Chair, Linda McNulty, and Richard Sturts. So going into Step 2 of this process, were the first round hearings. Before drawing a single line on these draft maps, the Commission held 23 public hearings around the state in July and August to get input from members of the public about issues relevant to redistricting, such as geography, communities of interest, minority voting rights, and competitiveness. After those hearings wrapped, the mapping start process actually began, and under Prop 106, the Commission was required to start with a blank slate, which we'll touch on a little bit more when we talk about the maps. They then divided the state into equal-population and compact grid-like districts, and the grid map was approved on August 18th. Since adopting the grid map, the Commission has met more than 25 times to consider adjustments to the grid to accommodate all the state constitutional criteria. During this time, they received additional public input and draft maps from the public. So the approval of the draft maps, on October 3rd, the Commission approved draft congressional map that incorporated changes based on all of the constitutional criteria. It approved a draft legislative map earlier this month on October 10th. Which brings us to Step 4, which is the second round of public hearings. Currently, the Commission is visiting 25 towns and cities to share the draft maps and to receive additional public input during the month of October and into November. The final maps are Step 5. Upon completion of the public comment period, the ARRC will adopt the final maps. And then Step 6, which Bruce spoke about, was the preclearance. So because Arizona is subject to Section 5 of the Voting Rights Act, the districts must be approved by the Federal Department of Justice or the federal court in Washington, D.C., before they can be used for Arizona elections. And I forgot my fascinating PowerPoint. Sorry about that. I got into it a little bit. Okay, so on to the actual maps. To show how the Commission came to the current draft maps, we will show you the progression of the maps. The map you see here on the screen was the congressional map that was approved by the last redistricting commission and most recently used in the 2010 elections. Per Proposition 106, which I mentioned, the Commission was required to start with a completely blank slate, not taking into account any election districts or incumbents. Which brought them to, under Proposition 106, the grid map, which I mentioned. The grid map, again, only takes into two considerations of the criteria, equal population and compactness. In August, the Commission asked that two grid maps be drawn, and on August 18th, they agreed on Option 2, which you see on the slide here. After more than 25 meetings, the Commission voted to approve the draft map that you see on the screen here. The Commission took into consideration public comment provided via public meetings, input that was given to the Commission through a number of sources, whether it was emailed, mailed, hand-delivered, faxed, telephoned. Overall, 5,000 comments helped to develop this draft map, as you see it here. And some of the highlights, just to go through them briefly for you. The draft congressional map includes two predominantly rural districts, three border districts, three districts in the greater Tucson area, five districts that are in Maricopa County. It avoids splitting Arizona's Indian reservations, and it includes two districts where minority voters have the opportunity to elect a candidate of their choice. So that's an overview of the congressional map for you. So moving on to the legislative maps, it was much like the congressional draft map, developing the legislative map followed a similar process. Here we see the legislative map from the last Commission, which was used in the 2010 elections. Again, per Proposition 106, the Commission started with a blank slate. A grid map was then approved in August, and similar to the congressional map, the grid map took into, only took into account equal population and compactness. Which leads to the legislative draft map. Arizona has 30 legislative districts, and each district elects one senator and two House members. Some other points to mention about this legislative draft map are as follows. So they definitely took into account population growth and reduction in areas, and the old district's population ranged anywhere from 155,000 to 378,000. For the current drafts, population ranges from 207,000 to 215,000. To comply with the Voting Rights Act, the draft plan includes 10 districts in which minority voters should have an opportunity to elect a candidate of their choice. The draft also includes several other things, so three districts wholly within Pima County, and three additional districts in southern Arizona, 17 districts primarily within Maricopa County, and nine districts that are primarily rural. So that gives you an overview of the legislative draft map. The most important part now is to talk about getting your input, which is the reason why we're here tonight. So as I mentioned, the Commission wants to hear what we have to say, and there are many ways that we can get your input. You can fill out a Request to Speak form at a public hearing and provide the Commission with your input. You might provide input on certain things, such as the constitutional criteria, or the congressional map, or the legislative map. You can submit your input by speaking at a hearing. You can also fill out the public input forms on the AIRC website, and you can visit azredistricting.org or call 602-542-5221, or toll-free at 855-733-7478 with any input you might have. Also, just want to talk about how you can stay connected in other ways with the Commission as we move through this process. There, this, on the screen, is a screenshot of the Commission's website, and you'll see the arrows highlight a couple of key areas which you might find of interest. So under Meetings, you can find future meetings or past meetings. In case you'd like to watch the process through which the draft maps were created, you can go back and watch them, and they're on there by date. If you'd like to make comments, you can see the public input form area and submit your comments there. And if you want to see the maps, you can click on Maps. The arrow down at the bottom of the slide of the screen here takes you directly to the draft maps, and this is an example of where you're directed once you click on Maps. So most people are interested, obviously, in viewing the draft maps up close and personal, and those can be found on this page. Once you click on Maps, you'll see this menu of choices. The maps are displayed in a number of different file types, which can be very confusing if you're not used to looking at it, but it's PDF, JPEG, and also what we'll talk about tonight, which is Google Maps. You'll see highlighted in red is the kmz/googolink, and that basically will take you to a Google map of the draft maps for both congressional and legislative. So just showing you what that looks like once you click through. Basically, Google Maps is a great way to view the maps because you can zoom in and out from your specific area to find boundaries that are of interest to you. Here you'll see the draft congressional map, and on the left, you'll see the sidebar. You have the ability to turn off different filters, such as the name of the counties or the name of the districts. You can also un-highlight the colors by clicking on those lists there, so you can see exactly what you're looking for. And this allows you just to view the map even more clearly. So to zoom into the map, this is the cool part. So the slide basically here shows you a zoomed-in version of the map, spin it for an area surrounding Maricopa County, just as an example. The great thing is you can zoom in and out using the Google Maps down to streets and blocks for where you live, so it's a great way to access it and look at the boundaries. So... To wrap this up, I just want to highlight... So to wrap this up, I just want to highlight the commission's website once again at azredistricting.org. On the website, you can draw maps, you can watch meetings and find information about future meetings. Also, want to encourage you to follow us on Twitter at hashtag AIRC. And also friend the commission on Facebook, and you can get regular updates. So in conclusion, thank you again for coming out to be part of this process. A final point on these maps, which Mr. Freeman mentioned, you can find them in your packet tonight, which you received. You can also find large blown-up versions on the walls over here on both sides. And I am available after the public comment period to answer any questions you might have on the mapping process, and happy to talk to you at that point. And you can also talk to the staff in the back, and they can show you how to access the maps online to take a better look at them. So I look forward to speaking with you, and thanks again for having us tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you, Corinne. Well, that brings us to the public comment portion of the hearing. Once again, if you'd like to speak, make public comment tonight, please fill out a yellow request to speak form, and they're found in the back. Right now, I have about 10 or 11, well, perhaps more coming. So what we're going to do tonight is ask that you limit your comments to about four minutes, and we'll have a timer. And I'm not sure if a bell will go off, but I think there'll be a red light up there, and that doesn't mean you have to stop talking. Just try, when you see that, try to conclude your remarks, and if you go a little bit longer than that, I might remind you of that. And I'm not trying to be rude, I just want to be fair to everyone else who's come here tonight. Also, when you come to the podium, I'd ask that you please state your name and then spell it, so our court reporter has an accurate record of your appearance. And if I haven't already mentioned who you're here representing, or where you're from, please go ahead and state that. And when you state where you're from, all we're looking for is a town, city, or county, not an address or anything like that. Let's see. If you have any written submittals to the commission, a map, or anything you'd like to submit in writing, just go ahead and give it to Mr. Bladeen, and he'll take that from you and make it part of our record. So let me make sure I covered everything. I think that's it. So I think we'll begin with public comment, and our first speaker will be Sam Madrano, Council Member, Bullhead City.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. My name is Sam Madrano. I'm a member of the Bullhead City Council. I'm up here today representing the tri-city council, which is a 21 elected officials in the three largest cities in Mojave County, representing about 60% of the population in Mojave County. I want to address both the congressional and the legislative map, and I'll make the legislative map pretty simple. We like it. About as simple as it can get. Okay? The congressional map, we know that it's been a very difficult process for you. We thank you, most of all, for listening to us the first go-around. It was absolutely amazing to watch your commission meeting and hear you say, "We really want to see a river district." And we heard that, and we're like, wow, you listened. We really liked that. We really appreciate that very much. And while we know that your work is hard and difficult because you can't make everybody happy, as a matter of fact, if you probably put everybody together, you've made nobody totally happy. But we understand that it's difficult. And again, with the congressional district, we've got to say, we can live with it. It does exactly what we asked you to do, which was keep the river districts and the river cities together, and keep us out of Maricopa County, or at least the Phoenix metro area, which is a big concern for a lot of rural Arizonans. We know not everybody's happy with the district, but we can live with it. That's pretty much all I have to say about it.
Thank you. Next, I have John Salem, Mayor, City of Kingman.
Good evening, Vice Chairman Freeman, and the rest of the commissioners. On behalf of the City of Kingman, I would just like to echo Mr. Madrano's comments with thank yous and kudos to all of your hard work, and the fact that you're spending so much of your time. I understand you have 25 more meetings to attend, and it's quite an undertaking, and I commend you for your efforts. With the legislative districts, you listened to us. We wanted Kingman and Bullhead City and Lake Havasu City to be in the same legislative district, and you gave us legislative district number five. And it looks very good. It fits all of our needs, and I think that it'll turn out really well. As far as the congressional districts, I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at maps in the past, and they seem to resemble more spokes-on-a-wheel to where we always took in a portion of the Phoenix metro area, or Surprise, Peoria, Glendale, some heavily populated areas where we didn't quite feel that we were getting the best representation that we could have. And looking at the map that you have presented before us, I think that it's a good representation of what we need. And you didn't split up the tri-city council cities, which is very good, Kingman, Bullhead City, Lake Havasu City, as well as taking in a lot of like-minded river cities of like populations and rural in nature. I think that because of the lack of population, you had to take in certain portions of more heavily populated areas such as the Santan Valley and on in through Penal County and some areas. But largely, it's rural, and I think we can live with that. I think it'll be just fine. I think we'll get adequate representation for what you've presented to us. And with that, we'd just like to thank you, and we appreciate the opportunity to have us speak.
Thank you. Next is Representative Doris Goodell, representing South.
Members of the commission, thank you so much, and I well appreciate your drive to and from Bullhead and in and out of Phoenix. I'm usually the reverse trip. Appreciate that. As much as I adore and admire my tri-city council members, I'm here tonight to represent another part of our Mojave County constituency, and those are the members of our community who reside north of the Grand Canyon. It consists of about 3,500 residents. When you look at this somewhat isolated population, which really struggles to maintain its identity with Mojave County, to share its services for all county services, planning and zoning, et cetera. Now to remove them and put them in another legislative district, I believe creates another challenge for these struggling communities. We do know that under the, not the current legislative map, but the former legislative map, these communities essentially were totally disenfranchised, never saw a representative, never saw a senator, had no identity with any of their elected officials at the state level. I'm very fearful that this very small group of strong Arizona Mojave County residents will now be moved into the larger home of the Navajo land, which will again disenfranchise all of these voters in our district and kind of push them away again from their attachment to Mojave County. So I speak for those residents being moved. I would just encourage to add them back, and we'll take them all. We'll keep it, we don't want to change anything else. We just want our Mojave County residents brought home and to maintain their identity within Mojave County. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Charlie Casson, City Manager, Lake Havasu City.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Charlie Casson is Lake Havasu City Manager. Tonight, I'm representing, and on behalf of Lake Havasu City Mayor Mark Nixon, and we're also a member of the tri-city council of Mojave County. And we just wanted to thank you for listening to our needs and our requests. I think the legislative and congressional maps, as adopted at this point, do the best they can to represent the needs of the river cities, fully acknowledging that these areas aren't perfect. But I don't know that perfection is even possible across the state. So at this point, I will echo what those before me said with respect to, we're happy for the most part with the way that they're laid out. And I just want to say, Corinne, thank you for providing the tools online and the technology that allowed us to participate fully in this process. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, Susan Smith, representing the River Valley Democratic Club from Mojave County.
Hello, my name is Susan Smith. Oh, just bend it down. Do I have to spell it? And currently, I'm the president of the River Valley Democrats. And I want to start off first by thanking the commission for doing this very difficult job, and especially Mr. Freeman for being here in person. We really appreciate that. We've all done the drive. And I'd also like to compliment the commission on your grace under fire. It's a very difficult job that you've done. And I've tried also to do the, to work on the numbers, and it's really tough with just a paper and pencil. I'm sure it's easier with a computer and a consultant, but it's still a difficult job because of all the variables and all the requirements. So I think that you have done a really, really good job. There's a couple of things that we would like to see, we would like to see better representation in the legislature, and we would like to see it reflect the voter registration figures that are roughly 1/3 Republican, 1/3 Democratic, and 1/3 Independent. Now, if you say the independents are split 50/50, which I don't know they are, but we would like to see more competitive legislative districts especially. And one other thing I'd like to compliment you on is the representation of the rural districts, which we all feel is very important because a lot of times, our concerns out here in the remote areas of the state don't seem to be priorities down in Phoenix. So we do appreciate the representation of the rural districts, although I feel very sorry for the candidates running for office in those districts as it's drawn. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Denise Ben-Sasan? Ben-Susan?
Ben-Susan.
Ben-Susan, I'm sorry. Representing South from Kingman.
Denise Ben-Susan, Kingman. Something I thought was really important to bring up, I actually made some notes this time instead of winging it, is that in the passing of Prop 106, voters made it clear they wanted the redistricting process to be independent and not controlled by politicians. Unfortunately, we've been seeing disturbing behavior by certain politicians who recently led a coordinated assault against the Citizen Volunteer Commission. Attorney General Tom Horn, whose so-called investigation of the commission, has been exposed by his own statements in front of partisan groups to be a politically motivated investigation and nothing more. These politicians fear that the citizen-driven independent commission will create fair, competitive districts that actually reflect all of our communities. Bullying and intimidation are unacceptable and must not be tolerated. We all have a duty to protect, not compromise, the independence of this important process. We need fair districts and fair politics this decade. We need districts that represent all Arizonians and not just the ones in gerrymandered districts. And I want to make one more point about Chairman Mathis. I did a lot of research on these issues that she's being attacked on, and I find it, quite frankly, almost a woman issue because she is an independent woman of her husband. Just because her husband is a Democrat does not mean that she is involved in Democratic activities. So I think this is almost insulting as a woman, that her husband's a Democrat, but he dominates her in some way. So I think the insults to her are just not accurate, and I think they all owe her an apology. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Beth Weiser. And if you could please tell us who you're representing and where you're from as well.
My name is Beth Weiser. I'm actually from Golden Valley. I teach in Kingman. I am the president of the Kingman Education Association, and I am also Chair of the Mojave County Democratic Central Committee.
And could you please spell your name?
W-E-I-S-S-E-R is my last name. Thanks. Thank you for how much work you're doing. I understand how hard it is to be a volunteer and work full-time. This is a lot of work. I also want to thank you for maintaining districts to be rural. We were having a lot more rural in the districts this time than there had been. And that was something that I had spoken about when you were up here before, when we had the hearing before. I also spoke about needing competitiveness in order to maintain the ability of our children to have an equal opportunity at a good education. The current majority party in our legislature has been moving forward an agenda to strengthen private schools at the expense of public schools. Weakening public schools weakens the opportunities for our children to have an equal chance for a quality education. When we're talking about minorities being impacted, this definitely impacts minorities. I want to stress again that we need to have more competitiveness, and thank you for the rural districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Donna Kraus from Mojave County.
I'm Donna Kraus, a resident of Mojave County, and that's Donna, D-O-N-N-A, Kraus, C-R-O-U-S-E. Okay, I just have a few brief comments, and I will leave my copies here. But as proposed, Congressional District 4 is not compact, and includes portions of counties that have no common community interest, with the majority of the counties creating District 4. In efforts to keep District 4 compact and still maintaining a rural river predominant interest, I would propose that the precincts due south of Yavapai County be included with the district to meet the needed population numbers, and that the portions of the counties proposed south of Yavapai and east of Maricopa, creating a hook effect around Maricopa County, be excluded from the Congressional District 4. Okay, legislatively, it is my concern with the proposed Legislative District 5 that the Arizona strip areas of Mojave County are excluded from the rest of the county. These communities need to feel connected with the rest of the county and should be included in our legislative processes as they are included in our government processes. And thank you very much.
Next is Donad Van Brunt. Not sure if I'm reading that correctly.
Donald Van Brunt. I'm resident of Mojave County. First, I'd like to speak on the legislative draft. You've obviously made an effort to keep the cities together, which is fine for the cities, but there's a third of the population of Mojave County that don't live in a city, or better. Your effort was obviously to keep all of the Indian reservations together. This can be very easily done by simply leaving two precincts in the county out. The Peach Springs Precinct Number 27, which you have left out, and the Moccasin Precinct, which is 23, which is north. But Beaver Dam, Littlefield, Colorado City, and Scenic have no Indian population, and there is no reason that they should not be included with the rest of Mojave and La Paz County in District 5. I have a counted population, and it can be done and maintain the populations that you are trying to maintain in the district, and still are trying to maintain in the district, and still leave those areas north of the Colorado River as part of the county. The Congressional District, regarding Congressional District Four, I would propose that District Four be comprised of all of Mojave County except precincts 23 and 27, Peach Springs, all of La Paz County, all of Yavapai County, the northern portion of Yuma County, and the following 15 precincts of Maricopa County. And rather than read them all, I'll leave you a copy of what I have prepared in a map prepared. I submitted this once before, but I apparently wasn't given any consideration. The Congressional District that you have created takes in large portions of Maricopa County, portions of Hila County, clear down into Pima County, and there's nothing, why I don't know. There's nothing in common with the rest of the Yavapai, Mojave, and La Paz Counties. But those, that portion which I proposed and named by precinct for Maricopa County does have something in common with the rest of us. And I leave you some copies of it. Ego, and I'll leave whatever. Okay, I thank you very kindly.
Thank you. Next is Regina Kopp, representing Self from Kingman.
Good evening. Thank you again for all your tireless work that you did on this Commission. We appreciate you coming here and speaking with us again. I'm going to be speaking to you today on the Congressional map only. I attended the redistricting meeting in Phoenix on 9:30. I was there the whole day. I was frustrated and disappointed, disappointed that I didn't get to speak as I put in to speak that day. I stayed until 5:00. I understand I was probably called to speak about 9:30 that, or 6:30 that evening. So it was, you know, it was a long day for me, coming from Kingman to speak and not getting to speak before you made your vote. The other frustrating part about it was, as I was watching the process, I felt like District Four was a redheaded stepchild, and as you were going through the process, you were adding little pieces of Maricopa County in to create enough of a population and competitiveness, and it wasn't, and it was that sacrificing District Four for the other counties in the donut hole that you were trying to fill. Now that the map has come out, my disappointment is how our whole Congressional District surrounds Maricopa County. My concern with this is what happens with the growth? In the next 10 years, we're living with this map. Do you think the growth is not going to go out into those areas? That's where the growth of Maricopa County and the surrounding metro valley is going to be. Where are representatives going to be coming from? They're going to come from that area. Then we're going to get lost up in Mojave County again. Thank you.
Next is Dawn DeAngena.
Hello, my name is Dawn DeAngena, and I'm from Kingman. I represent myself. First, I want to thank you all for the work you're doing. I really appreciate that. I know it's really hard. But there's some things here that I'm really concerned about. This is supposed to be an independent commission. When we have situations where Commissions make decisions on weekends, and then call their constituents and say, "This is what I did. Do you agree?" Well, they didn't know anything about it, but by being sheep, they went ahead and just agreed. One said, "Well, I can't do that because I don't know everything." And so that person said, "I really can't vote for it." And I commend him for that, for doing that. But the others, I don't. They should have looked into the situation and find out exactly what is doing. Just like the other young lady was saying, we have a donut hole there in Maricopa County, and you just moved it, and moved it, and moved it until you took out three senators, three congressmen. Now, I understand, this is supposed to be an independent council that knows nothing about Republicans or Democrats, but you took out three Republicans. To me, that's wrong. Now, regarding Tom Horn and this, and your chairman, he's not doing this politically. I think she should step down. That's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my last request-to-speak form. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Commission? Going once, going twice? Well, thank you all for coming tonight. It's, we really appreciate you showing up and taking an interest in the process. Please continue to be involved in the process. We have a number of more public comment hearings upcoming. Tomorrow, the Commission is in Maryvale Friday at the San Carlos Indian Reservation in the morning, and then in the City of Globe in the evening, Avondale on Saturday. And that's about as far out as I can plan my life, but there's more. There's more hearings in the following week and the week after that. And if you go to the website, azredistricting.org, you'll find a link there that gives a list of all the upcoming public comment hearings. All of them are streamed live, unless we're in a real remote area that doesn't have that capability. After these public comment hearings conclude, the Commission will reconvene and have business meetings, and take into account all of this public comment, apply them to the constitutional criteria we are mandated to follow, and make adjustments to the maps as appropriate, and then there'll be a vote on the final map. So what you've done tonight is very helpful for us, and we really appreciate you coming out tonight. So with that, I'll conclude the meeting at 6:55 PM.